You want us to do the pledge or what? He'll be right out.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite.
Thank you for joining us, Mayor.
He was on a call.
I was sitting back there listening to the long version of Kendrick Lamar, "They Not Like Us." I got caught up.
That's the pump-up song this summer.
Okay, so, Madam Clerk, could you, do you call the roll already?
No.
Could you call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Quorum is present for the City Council Successor Agency, Housing Authority, and Joint Powers Authority.
Okay, we're gonna call, um, public comment. Any persons wishing to address the City Council, Successor Agency, Housing Authority, JPA, on any item on today's agenda, other than the public hearings, may do so at this time. Okay, with that, we'll close public comment and go to Item 1, CSA 1 and H1.
Want registered.
Receive and file. Now, we're going to, um, the public hearings, and we're gonna do this as we can in mass, so we're gonna take PH1, PH2, excuse me, PH1 is withdrawn, PH, PH2, PH3, PH4, and PH5, and we're gonna take those together. Is there motion for 1 and 2 on each of those?
Some vote.
Second.
Do you want them read into the record?
Okay, no, we don't have to have them read into the record. Um, Madam City Clerk?
Uh, council members, Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Fogg.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. And now, we're gonna call PH6.
Public hearing to consider, uh, the next scheduled matter, Mayor, is a public hearing to consider the approval of the 2024 through 2025 annual action plan.
Has the notice of the hearing been given, the time, form, and manner as required by law, and do you have the affidavit on file?
Notice has been given and an affidavit is on file.
Have any communications been received on the matter?
No communications have been received, Mayor.
Is there staff report?
Yes, uh, there is, Mr. Mayor. I'll ask Mr. Harjinder Singh to provide you with a brief oral report.
Good afternoon, Mayor. 2024, 2025 annual action plan that covers the CDBG and home programs. Sorry, having some technical.
Oh, you're done, I'm sorry. So now, hey, I'm shocked.
Sorry, just trying to.
No, that, that, that's beautiful. Public, is there any public comment?
I wasn't dying, sir. Oh, we just.
He's just playing with you.
We just can't get the next slide on, I apologize. We were trying to work on the slide.
From the world's shortest staff report to the world's longest pause.
Sorry, I was trying to get this to slide over and it just didn't work, so my apologies.
Go ahead, Harjinder.
So. Escape. Sorry, give me one second to get it started. Apologies, some technical difficulties.
I see.
Yeah, it's Rosa.
That was funny, man.
That was funny.
Sorry about that.
Get out of here. He said just.
Beautiful.
There we go.
Almost worked.
Yeah, I don't want to.
Yeah. That's not working. You restarted it. Yeah. It was a major mistake. Arrow's on, see? Okay, okay, apologies, let me continue from there. Uh, the process starts with the 2022, 2026 consolidated plan, uh, which is basically a grant application to receive federal funds. Uh, the usage of these grant funds requires the approval of an annual action plan on a yearly basis. Uh, for fiscal year 2024, 2025, the city of Inglewood received, uh, CDBG funds of $1,208,060, which represents a 3.2% decrease from the prior year, and home funds of $650,232, which is a 9.7% decrease. Um, this reduction in allocation by the federal government is based on the increasing prosperity of the city, uh, in which income and property values reduce our eligibility of grant funds. Uh, the first step to use these funds is the community engagement and outreach process. Um, the outreach included a community survey that was released on May 28, 2024, uh, May 30th, community meetings that were held virtually at 2:00 and 6:00 PM, a public hearing that was here, uh, held here at City Council on June 4th, um, as well as a second public hearing that will be happening today to receive additional comments from the public. Um, as the result of the community engagement that's happened so far, uh, this city received the following top three activities as priorities from our community. Uh, first was the minor home rehabilitation, second was affordable housing for renters and homeowners, and third was parks improvement. So basically, this is what the public was telling us via our surveys and our meetings for what they consider important and where we should allocate our funds. Uh, this leads us to our first program, which is the Community Development Block Grant Program. This program provides resources for housing and increasing the living environment for low and moderate income persons. Um, CDBG funds have specific requirements for how the funds must be utilized. Uh, 15% of these funds must go towards public services, and what you guys see here is a list of what we consider to be public services that we can use these funds on. Um, just to read a couple off, uh, employment, childcare, healthcare services, and, uh, fair housing counseling are all approved uses for this funding. 75% of the funds must go towards public and facility improvements. That includes public infrastructure, neighborhood facilities, housing, and other real property activities. And the last 20% of this CDBG funding that's provided goes to program administration, basically what we pay to staff to run the department. Uh, using these percentages, staff, uh, recommends the following allocations. Uh, for CDBG, uh, for administration, the 20%, that'll be $241,612. Uh, for public services, which is 15%, uh, staff is making a recommendation to fund fair housing counseling at $64,500, and senior meals, which is $116,709, for a total of $181,209. And for CDBG, public improvement, uh, services, which is 65% of the funds, uh, for park infrastructure improvement at $750,000, and to continue funding the minor home rehabilitation program at $500,000. Uh, what you'll notice is that, uh, the total amount is actually greater than the allocation. Um, that's because we had some additional funding from the prior year that we're rolling forward to fund all of these programs. The second program covered by this plan is the Home Investment Partnership Act, and the purpose of this program is to expand and preserve the supply of decent, safe, sanitary, and affordable housing, with primary attention to rental housing for very low-income and low-income families. Uh, the current plan for these funds is, uh, to allocate 10% towards administration, uh, which is what's required of this funding, uh, 15% towards the CHODO, uh, which is basically developers in, uh, paying for them for the services and getting a, um, affordable housing project up and running, and home-eligible activities at 75%. Eligible activities is basically funding that we provide to, uh, affordable housing developers to give us, uh, units that can go out to the public. And that concludes the staff, uh, presentation. Thank you.
Is there any public comment? Hearing no council, no public comment. Is there a motion approval?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment, please?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for, um, asking for a staff report on this. I did have questions, but staff has answered them, so thank you very much.
All right, so there's the first and the second. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Council members, Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Fogg.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye, and loath as I am to do so, I didn't realize these were public hearings. So we're gonna have to go back to 2, 3, PH2, 3, 4, and 5, and so, Madam Clerk, could you read each one of those? And, uh, so we'll go, Madam Clerk, what is the sched, next scheduled matter?
Yes, Mayor, the next scheduled matters, uh, they are public hearings to consider assessment levies for the Morningside Park Maintenance Assessment District, 1974-2, levies for the In-Town Maintenance Assessment District, 1975-1, levies for the Inglewood Street Lighting Assessment District, 1980-1, levies for the Darby Dixon Maintenance Assessment District, 1987-1, and that concludes the, the reading, Mayor.
Has the notice of these hearings been given in a time, form, and manner as required by law, and do you have the affidavits on file?
Yes, Mayor, notices has been given and the affidavits are on file.
Is there any communications on the matters?
No communications were received, Mayor.
Is there a staff report on these matters?
I'm trying to make it as brief as, uh, as the first, uh, pre-pause, uh, report earlier. Uh, as you know, Mayor and council members, uh, we've had these assessment districts in place for, uh, quite a number of years. They go back actually to the 70s and one of them.
Fifty years.
Yeah, one of them, uh, of course, it probably longer than 50 for the, uh, for the particular, uh, landscape and lighting district, which is one of the oldest in the country. And, uh, in addition to that, over the course of the years, uh, additional services were requested by certain segments of the, of the city, uh, geographically, and these assessment districts were performed. Uh, the purpose of assessment districts, by and large, are for us to be able to appropriate additional services above and beyond what would normally be furnished under the general funding, uh, for the city, and, uh, and each one of the parcels, uh, go ahead and they vote. They have to vote to approve the assessment districts, and they are levied a special assessment on their annual property tax bills. And, uh, once annually, there are reports made, uh, to the council in the form of an engineer's report, and, uh, and after that, uh, the, uh, there were recommendations to the city council for what the assessments will be for the following year. It's notable that since the passage of, of Prop 218 in the late 90s, uh, there's been some controversy over whether or not the council, uh, can legally increase these assessments without a vote. As a result, the assessments have been in place and have not been raised for a great many years. That concludes my report.
Thank you. There is there any public comment? Hearing no public comment, uh.
Mayor, I'll make a motion as to, for PH1, 1 and 2, PH2, 1 and 2, PH3, 1 and 2, PH4, 1 and 2, and PH5, 1 and 2.
Second.
No, before you do that, uh, PH1 had been pulled from the.
PH1, so you could start with this too.
PH2.
Yes, sir.
PH2.
Three and four.
PH2.
Yes.
Uh, PH3, PH4, and, and there's a PH5.
Yes, sir.
Move 1 and 2 for each of those.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Council members, Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Fogg.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye.
Fastest five public hearings I've ever seen. Ever.
Consent.
So now we're gonna do the consent calendar. Items 2 through 8, I believe.
11.
No, 2 through, 2 through 11, I believe.
Second.
Madam City Clerk?
Council members, Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Fogg.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye, A1.
Thank you, Mayor. We had one closed session item. It was involved 10701 South Yukon Real Property, and, uh, there was a discussion held.
Uh, A2.
And no oral reports. Thank you.
CM1.
Uh, yes, Mayor and council members, uh, today I have the great pleasure of being able to formally introduce to you, uh, Mr. Tony Almost. Uh, he's our newly appointed Public Works Director. I, I think by now many of you have met him. Uh, even prior to him joining us officially, uh, he, uh, he came to the state of the city, um, banquet, or it wasn't really banquet, Economic Summit.
There you go.
And, uh, and so, uh, so he was, he's been a longtime, uh, Public Works Director. Uh, I think he has about 31 years of experience in the field. He comes to us directly from the city of Pasadena, uh, where he oversaw the entire Public Works Department. Uh, I think there was close to, uh, $500 million worth of CIPs that he, he, uh, managed over the time that he was there, a rather large workforce. And, uh, and before that, he was, uh, also in Manhattan Beach as the Public Works Director, and I think he's done some short stints in Huntington Beach and maybe, uh, the County of Orange, La Brea. But at any rate, uh, he's a great addition. Uh, he, he joined us, uh, a couple of weeks ago. I haven't had the opportunity to, at a council meeting, to formally introduce him to the public, and I think he's already met a number of you. I can tell you that, uh, he joined at the time that you don't necessarily want to join the city, right when we're in the middle of, uh, discussing your budget for the next year, uh, but he has been, he, he has been very impressive, uh, coming to the table in advocating for his department and being very familiar already with the list of CIPs and the other operational needs. Uh, I'll, um, I'll end also by saying that he speaks Spanish. He's bilingual, so it's a, it's a great pleasure to have him. Thank you very much.
Tony, welcome, Tony. And now we're to CC1.
Staff report recommending that the mayor and council members receive and file the certification of petition for proposal ordinance to impose a 3% gross receipt tax on for-profit hospitals and take 1 of 3 options pursuant to Election Code Section 9215.
I move, uh, item, excuse me, number 3.
Yeah.
And, and it's, it's my understanding, we'll first move 1 and 3.
Yeah, second.
Okay, and it's with the understanding that, um, so that everyone understands that if the people that drew the initiative withdraw it by August 9th, that it will not be on the ballot in the general election. Madam City Clerk?
Council members, Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Fogg.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye, CC2.
Uh, yes, Mayor, again, wanna, um, welcome Mr. Tony Almost, Almost, to, uh, our division here.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wait a minute.
I'm sorry, Treasuries Report.
Now, CC3.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mayor, thank you. Just wanted to welcome our Public Works Director, Tony Almost. It's a pleasure to have him with us, and then also, happy birthday, Mayor. Your birthday is on Thursday, so happy birthday. That concludes my remarks.
All right now.
Where's all the food at?
I know, where's the food?
You brought water bottles?
I don't ever tell anybody when it's my birthday.
None of the parties have food. Dang.
All right.
Spend the money.
Okay. Inglewood Successor Agency is in session, CSA2.
Monthly Treasuries Report for the month ending June 30, 2024.
Receive and file with adjourned Successor Agent, Housing Authority's in session, H2.
Monthly Treasuries Report for the month ending June 30, 2024.
Receive and file with adjourned Housing Authority, the JPA's in session, JPA1.
Monthly Treasuries Report for the month ending June 30, 2024.
Receive and file. Uh, we'll adjourn the Joint Powers Authority. There are no appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Public comment, any persons wishing to make public comment on any matter concerning city business, not elsewhere considered on the agenda, may do so at this time. Who'd you leave the number with, sir?
Asked me to give it to the guy, and he was supposed to give it to Morales.
He really?
I believe, uh, Mr. Atwell took it and he was resolving it. I think it's put on the schedule, from what I understand. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Atwell.
So we'll take it and, and we'll get to you as soon as possible, sir. Oh, look at that, new Public Works Director.
Oh, Tony.
Oh, my God.
Oh, it looks like a setup now, Tony.
What's that planned? Who planned it?
You guys are good.
Who planned it?
You guys are good. Good Tony. Look at Tony.
Was the photo off?
Good Tony. In front of everybody.
Yes. You gonna get a call now, that's for sure.
Oh, see, they don't like us.
Oh, Lord.
Okay, yes, sir.
Hello, Honorable City Council of the great city of Inglewood.
Yes.
My name is Anthony Lewis, from a neighboring city, a sister city of Compton, and I came here to steal some of your thoughts, see how you guys operate, and take some of these jewels back to try to get Compton to act like y'all. And I'm so thankful to be here. I've been filing complaints on every floor that I've been to, and my formal complaint, and it goes on the record, when it's a formal complaint, is your staff, Mayor Butts, is awesome. Your, your people, their community service, as far as, uh, answering my questions, getting me what I want. I've been here for the first time. I got a stack of, stack of information this thick, and before I, uh, leave here, I need 2 more things from you, and that is your business card and the city manager's business card. Everybody else I got, but I want to thank you again for allowing me to come here, to share in this wonderful, uh, meeting, and come through the city of Inglewood.
Okay.
You guys are awesome.
You got as much time as you need, sir, thank you.
But again, and, and I told the people in security that, uh, I promised them I would get them a raise, even if it's a dime.
We, we, we did it already last year.
Okay, I'll, I'll.
And they got another one coming in January. Got another one coming in January, so you're too late.
Got you.
All right, thank you, sir.
And again, if I can get you guys' business cards.
Yes, we'll work that out. Um, now we'll go to council comments. Uh, Councilwoman Gray, District 1.
Thank you. I didn't know how to follow that one. That was great. I'll start with that. Um, um, I always believe and think in staff and to hear someone from the community, even though he's not from Inglewood, but someone outside the community recognizing the importance of our staff and how they add to the value of what we do here as, as on the council and mayor. So thank you to staff, and the gentleman referred to you as an awesome staff, and I totally agree, because, uh, staff is always responsive very quickly when I ask them to take care of any issues in District 1, so thank you to the staff. Also want to welcome our new public director, Tony Almost, right, and, uh, look forward to working with him. Uh, I heard, uh, the city clerk referred to a birthday for the, for the, uh, certainly president, but he's a mayor, right, so, so, but I, I think I recall that he told me he was 35 all the time, so I don't know if he's celebrating birthdays anymore, but, uh, but happy birthday. Um, I, I'm excited about talking about this next event. I mean, I think Inglewood has a wonderful event, which is at a music festival, but there is a Family Unity Day event coming up. This next month, August 24th, it's for the community. It's, it's called again the Family Unity Day in Darby Park. It's it's called again the Family Unity Day in Darby Park. We will have events for all all generations. We will have activities for the kids. We will have games. We will have free food. We have the In-N-Out Burger mobile unit coming. We have free tacos. I heard yay over there. We have free ice cream, free backpacks. We will have resources, booze, and blood pressure checks. We will have us. We will have softball. And also softball games. And the mayor is going to throw out the first pitch, right?
That's right.
Absolutely, okay. We will have basketball games. We will have pickle. We're gonna have a pickleball clinic to learn how to play pickle, right? And we're gonna have a clown. We're gonna have face painting, all kinds of activities, card games, line dancing, live music. So please come. We will have also a performance by the Baile Folklorico Group. Said it right? And we're looking forward to that. And again, we will have line music, and folks love to line dance, and certain generations love to do that. So it's gonna be a fun day. So please let everyone in your communities know about it, come out and just enjoy being with each other. And I will continue to report on this. As we move along, we're adding things to it, so I'm very excited about it. Also, recently, I had a tour of the Inglewood Police Department. First time, lived here for many years, but first time, and I knew the mayor when he was working there. But I never got a full tour. And I want to thank Chief Mark Praterata for taking the time out to have me to tour his operation. It was about two hours. Here's the picture there. Two of the commissioners, Commissioner, Youth Commissioner Michael Ector and Commissioner Michael Ector and the community member Anthony Wright. Mark was outstanding in terms of just just sharing information. It's you you know, you know, the officers are on the streets, but you don't see the behind the scene things that they do. I mean, I I he showed me the unit, that's a cold case unit, and talked about everything. There's so many different facets of the police department that the public really do not realize the work that they do to provide public safety to our our residents. And so thank you, Mark. I always have had an appreciation for the work that our police officers do, and I just have a renewed appreciation for that. And one last thing, Will. Doris Obi, I think many of you know her. She's our tennis champion. And so I want to congratulate her. Doris Obi, founder and CEO of the Forty Love Foundation, for being named the Twenty Twenty Four Women and Girls Who Ace Award by the United States Tennis Association of Southern California in recognition of her outstanding work and dedication to mentoring young women on and off the court. This is not the first time she's received it, and so we're happy. It's always great that our our residents receive awards. And I want to congratulate Doris again. She will be receiving the award in August, I believe, in San Diego. And congratulations again to Doris. Again, thank you for the to the staff for everything that you do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Congratulations. Ms. Obi, Councilman Padilla, District two.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick things. Number one, Tony, welcome aboard. Look forward to working with you. You know, you came to the right place, city of Inglewood. You're gonna really come to realize, as we all have, how beautiful this city is and, as we said, our staff and the community and the support that we have. So welcome aboard. Also, coming up for in my district on Saturday at ten AM at the District Two Community Center, I have the hands-on CPR and pool safety presentation. So we'll have somebody from the the county Health Department showing how to do CPR, hands-on, and then followed by a presentation from our Parks and Rec staff to do pool safety, right? We're in the middle of the summer, how to be safe around pools. Or even if you're out at a river or a lake, it's things that we all sometimes we forget or we just take for granted. And it's just a reminder of how important it is to be eyes-on and hands-on when you're around pools and around kids that are that are out there and and just making sure we're all safe, not only kids, but adults as well. So that's at ten AM at the District Two Community Center. And then we just talked about the police department, you know? Every year, law enforcement has National Night Out. It's an opportunity for communities to come together and to say thank you to the men and women of the police department here in Inglewood for risking it all every single day and for providing quality service to our residents and our community. And so next Tuesday night, starting at five PM, right back here on Gravella, behind City Hall and the police department, we'll be doing National Night Out. We'll have a bunch of vendor booths out there, some entertainment. And I'll also have my, as we call it, the Councilman Padilla's Classic Car Show. I'll have about fifty cars out there. Come out, take a look at these classic cars. They're beautiful. The event itself is to say thank you. Again, thank you to our police officers for always being there to serve our community. I'm looking forward to seeing you there. And then on the seventeenth of August, I have our District Two Picnic and the Annual Chili Cook-Off. So we have our chili chefs that are ready to roll. They're already competing with each other, talking trash, but that's okay. You know, come on out on the seventeenth at North Park. We changed the hours last year. We're gonna keep it to four PM, so it'll go from four to seven, right? So don't show up at noon like some folks did last year. It's at four o'clock. That way the sun's down and we can just enjoy an evening of fun, entertainment. There'll be plenty of food. Everything is free. We're gonna be doing some raffles of bicycles and some scooters so that, you know, our kids can enjoy that part of it as well. And that'll be followed by a movie in the park. And then a couple of last second things, Mayor.
One minute.
So I want, you know, obviously want to wish you a happy birthday coming up. But, you know, it's on Thursday, right? Yeah, so there you go, man. You can't hide it. I just wish you would have brought some food for everybody. What's up with that? You know, exactly, huh?
We don't celebrate my birthday.
Yeah, we do. But I do want to say, I almost wasn't gonna come today, but my wife said you gotta go because it's her birthday. And we were gonna go out and just enjoy the day. And she's like, no, man, you gotta go in. You gotta, you know, you gotta represent. So I want to wish my wife Stella a happy birthday. I love you.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Stella. Happy birthday, Stella.
Enjoying it.
Happy birthday, Stella.
And and then I hate to end on a sad note, but unfortunately, you know, we have to give the good and the bad also. So for those of you that know or knew Ted Brass.
Yeah.
Ted Brass, a dear man. He was my neighbor for many, many years, my next-door neighbor, him and Glenda. He was also one of my first commissioners that I appointed when I first came on the city council. He passed away last week, unfortunately. And so I just want to close in his honor and in his memory, and may his soul rest in eternal peace. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dionne Fog from District four.
Thank you, Mayor. So first off, I want to wish a happy birthday to Mayor Butts and to Stella. No, I'm not. Happy, happy birthday. And then I also want to welcome Tony, looking forward to connecting with you. I want to bring to District four residents' attention that we are beautifying Crenshaw. Praise God. It is, we have the Crenshaw Capital Improvement Project starting August twelfth. And as you all know, Crenshaw needs a serious facelift, so it is happening. It's starting August twelfth. There'll be more information coming, but look forward to that. I want to thank our fabulous team, Louis Atwell and his whole staff, our city manager, for helping bring this to fruition. I also want to thank the past city manager, Artie Fields, because this is where I really started this with him. So District four is happening. Also, I wanted to address, I've received concerns about Darby Park. There's a fence that separates Darby Park from the Renaissance, and we've had like a homeless encampment there. So I've been working with our Parks and Rec staff to fix that opening because we have some folks coming in from the park, from the homeless encampment, and they're jumping the fence and they're getting into the Renaissance. And some of the residents have expressed concern. So I want to let our District four residents in the Renaissance know that we are addressing those issues, and we should hopefully have those issues addressed within the next couple of weeks at the latest. I did get a chance to Visum Cosum, and it was absolutely amazing. I missed the, I guess, the soft grand opening because it was the same day as the City of Inglewood Music Fest. But I got a chance to go. It is absolutely amazing. If you have not had an opportunity to get to Cosum, go and check it out. It is, the technology is revolutionary and everything's state of the art. You gotta go check it out. You will be wowed. You will be floored. And that is the manager. I believe his name is Adolfo. He showed me around, so looking forward to connecting with him and having some District four events there. I also attended the Intuit Dome Fit and Functionality Test. That was the weekend before last, and it was just an open event where they invited residents to come out and just have a small a small premiere of what's to come at the Intuit Dome. And they kind of wanted to test and make sure everything is operating properly. So Steve Ballmer was there. It was a great event. They had food and beverages, so it was wonderful. So I want to thank Intuit Dome for inviting the community to come out for that nice event. Also, we did welcome our utility box artwork. If you haven't seen it, it is amazing. We had an event, and it showcased all of the utility box artworks. And want to thank our mayor and council members for coming on out and participating. That's one of the artists, that is his artwork behind us. It was an amazing event. And so if you haven't seen it, they're going up. We're trying to get all of the utility boxes wrapped. A lot of other cities have done it. It just adds just a nice look and feel to the city. So looking forward to wrapping the rest of the boxes and working with our city manager to make that happen in our Parks and Recs Division. Also, I have the town hall coming up on August fourteenth. Please mark your calendars. Mayor, can I get one more minute?
Absolutely.
Please mark your calendar. Town Hall meeting on August fourteenth. It will be at the Hollywood Park Casino. Please stay tuned for information. More information coming. It's gonna happen from six to eight PM. And then I also have the backpack giveaway, third annual, that I partner with Assembly Member Tina McKinner. That's on August twenty fourth. Inglewood Unified School District, please make sure you attend. Love putting backpacks in our school, in our Inglewood Unified School District students' hands. So August twenty fourth, and that will be at the Superior Shopping Center. Two more things. First, I want to introduce my sons. They are out of school. They're here. My son's out of town, so I brought them, Fitzgerald and Sebastian. And thank you. I'm so proud of them. They got all As and Bs. And so I'm gonna take them, they don't know it, but they know it now, to, what is it? The Dave and Buster's to celebrate their As and Bs this year. I'm proud of you, and I love you both very much.
All right.
And then lastly, Mayor, I want to close in honor of Richard Cochran. He is, was the husband of Jackie Cochran, our library commissioner. He passed away last week. They celebrated fifty-four years of marriage. He worked in entertainment, and he had a very wonderful life with his beautiful wife. And so I I've already called her and and gave her my condolences, but I'd like to close this meeting in the honor of Richard Cochran, please. Thank you.
That'll be fine. Councilwoman Ayla Morales, District three.
Just some brief comments, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank Planning. The mayor says this is from Planning with, he'll talk about in a minute. But thank you very much, Chris and Crew, for that. Just like to, sir, the tree issue, I will be, I'll talk to you afterwards. I'll give you a number, and that way I'll make sure that someone contacts you this time around. Tony, welcome. You've heard it five times now. That's a lot of pressure. Hopefully you enjoy this, this ride. This is a great city to work for, man. I mean, I hope you really start to see, you know, what kind of people are here, the level of staff. Everybody's so, so good. Next thing, just want to, Alex mentioned National Night Out, of course. That's gonna be a great day. But I want to point out the fact that yesterday there was a game that it was brought about by the police department, all the police officers. They wanted to play the kids at baseball over at Rogers Park. And they just did a great job. They had a barbecue afterwards, and it all came from them. It was born within the police officers. They did it, and the kids just love them. But I hope that they continue to do that around with all of the leagues that exist in the in the park. Just a great day. But really, shout out to the kind of police department that we have. I know Councilman Padilla mentioned, you know, it's our opportunity to thank them on next Tuesday. But it's amazing that that a city our size continues to have such great police officers. So congratulations to them. And then, of course, happy birthday, Jim. Let me check it off the list right here. All right, that's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. You started this, Ayesha, you started it. Oh, I'm sorry. It was Angela who did it? Oh. Well, Angela, you reminded her. Okay. All right. Okay, I'll get you guys. So I did a number of things last week. Now, we're updating our general plan, and we have a slogan for it. And it's Next Level Inglewood. And somebody from Planning put this on our on our on our dais. And so, you know, it's it's a big process to update a general plan. It's costs us a million, million-five or something like that over time. But it's important because the general plan that was developed decades decades ago has nothing to do with what Inglewood has come becoming and evolved to. I attended Eslebon Armando. It's a young Latin group, and and I welcomed them to Inglewood. And it was a really great, great event. Jose was there. He, Jose Cortez, he videotaped it. It was wonderful. Next, we had a scholarship presentation to two scholars from UCLA and Howard at a building first. It's over on Eighty First and Crenshaw. And and I love attending events there because it's around the corner from my house. So it's, it was on Saturday, so it was wonderful. And then Manchester United is considering building a new stadium. And so they sent administrators and press here to tour SoFi. And that was on Saturday as well, Saturday or Sunday. But anyway, and then yesterday, the Chargers opened their training camp in El Segundo. And it's a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar facility. It's very nice. I love the gym. And I also want to welcome Tony Almost to the city. And I hope that you will call your former fellow department heads and tell them that you were at a council meeting where we did five public hearings, and a council meeting screwed it up, and still we're finished before two forty-five. Okay? You got, you gotta tell them that, right? Okay?